Let me most sincerely, good evening everybody. Let me most sincerely apologize for your time this evening. I know some of you have been here for a while. And that is why I've been hurrying, I've been naturally been so much. He said, for me, it is different. I would have been here on time even if it was one person. And by now, I would have done. The rest can come and learn from the person that was here with me. Because really, we just have to manage our time more efficiently. So I sincerely, sincerely apologize if you have been waiting. And again, I have just three things that I've said this evening because I've heard people talk about capacity building, capacity building, capacity building. I don't think, for me, that is the reason to worry about. I'll talk about capacity building. In the end, first is, for me, is gratitude. I came to thank all of you who are Nigerians, especially for sacrificing your time, which is the most important, your resources in supporting the process in Nigeria, especially last year's election. Some of you made phone calls, some visited, some spent their time talking. All this is very important. And for that, I do not take for granted. Whether you supported me or you supported another person, you were part of it, and I urge you to continue. I'm sincerely, sincerely grateful for that. And that is my number one reason. May God Almighty continue to reward you for that effort. For the organizers of this event today, most of whom are organizers in the past, I thank you. And I urge you to continue. And I've listened, you said, you're now going to have a policy think tank. I urge you to continue in that direction. And let it not be a Nigerian thing. It is very important. Because often, we start a noble thing. And because of our transnational life, we end it somewhere along the line. It's just like all of us who are involved in politics. You know, I always say to people, nobody is claiming to be a saint, but I always urge people, can we be a little bit consistent in what we do? So, again, gratitude for you to stop starting this, and may you continue. You know, I was telling you this evening, I said, every day in life, I learn, I meet good and bad people. And I take note of the good ones, and I take note of the bad ones. Because it's very important as you go along. Nigeria is bad because we are bad. If we live the life we preach, it will be good. But we say something else and do something else. That's why it's not working. You know, if all of us, if more and more people, and that's what we're trying to change. And change doesn't come easy. I listened to my brother talk about his experience. And it's a good experience. You learn a lot. You know, we learn it every day. And everything, you criticize something, say this is wrong, and everybody takes it. So, for me, it's not going to be about capacity. I'm going to talk about capacity building in the end. But since you said you're starting a think tank today, let me tell you what happens in Chadam House. They don't really want to listen to your lecture. They want you to answer their questions. It is their question that shows whether what you're doing. So I think, I would reverse it. People didn't come here, I'm sure, not to learn about capacity building. That you can just find a definition. They probably want to ask questions and get it answered. Because I know capacity building will do a lot in Nigeria, but there's some more important things that can do more. So maybe we'll start with question and answer. If you agree, we'll go directly to the questions people want to be answered. And then we'll talk about capacity building in the end. Or do we start the other way around? Whatever you say is what I'll do. Thank you. So let's go and ask the questions. No, if you collect the if you collect the questions, you won't be able to answer the ones that are not, that are not good. I want the people to speak up and say, you're not a human being, and so so I can answer them while a human being. So, yes, when they collect questions, they remove the ones that they don't want you to answer. The people are here. Let's take their questions.
Vow.
Just a few.
Thank you very much, sir. Good evening, everybody. I'll just be straightforward and brief, okay? Mr. Peter Obi, Indian community in Canada. The Chinese community in Nigeria have proven that, that there is strength in unity. And you can achieve more when you work together. Now, we know the peculiarity with Nigeria. We know the issue. We, I salute you for your confidence in going for the election last year. But what are you doing, sir, to bridge the gap among all the ethnic groups? Because with all due respect, okay, there seems to be this apprehension towards certain ethnic groups in the country. What are you doing to bridge that gap? Not just among ethnic groups, but among political parties? Similarly to what Tinbo did when he was able to bring people from CPC, AMPP, part of Abga, PVP, and ACN to firm APC. What can you do in that aspect so as to gain the power at the center? Thank you.
All protocols duly observed. The question I want to ask is, where do you think, in your opinion, where do you think we got it wrong at the last election? And what do you think we can do differently to, you know, get the change we really all desire in the country?
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My question is, we know in the last election, the ANE came up with an excuse that there was a glitch for the ANE server. And now, the next election will be coming in 2027. What are the plans in order to make sure that this kind of excuse doesn't come up again? Or if after it comes up, how do you tackle it? Thank you.
Your Excellency, my question is still related to the last election. And very importantly, I'm sure I'm not the only one who observed that there are a lot of external influences on our election system. Specifically, I'll mention an interview that the former president G E J granted, where he, you know, expressed his displeasure as how America influenced the outcome of his own election. He specifically named the former U.S. president. We also saw similar situations play out in the last election. My question is, how are you, as a candidate who is most likely going to stand in the next election, making efforts to lobby these external forces or to align them to your own side of the political struggle? It's a very pertinent question, and I'd like to have answers to that. Thank you.
Your Excellency, one more. So I'm taking all the questions from here. Next time, it will be decide.
The last one.
Thank you. So my question is very simple. Will you keep contesting till you eventually win? Because we've seen people, even our last president contested four times. People still keep contesting, five, yeah. So is it going to be okay, so will you just, you know? Thank you.
Okay, your Excellency.
Well, let me start. First question talked about ethnicity and religion. Quite frankly, we don't have that issue. Ethnicity and religion is a clear marginalization of the elite greedy group, the establishment, to keep us where we are. It is something that was born out of incompetence. When you're not doing well, or when you want real state capture, you bring it in. Because I don't know any ethnic in Nigeria that is not suffering. Tell me which part of Nigeria is secure today? Tell me if there's any ethnic group that buys bread cheaper? Tell me if there's any religion that buys bread cheaper? If the Muslims start today to sell bread cheaper, I can tell you the Christians who go to the mosque and buy the bread. Why is the sun? So it is what we use to continue keeping Nigeria where it is. Because we have refused to use the proper process based on competence, capacity, compassion to select our leaders. So they hire all sorts of tools to tell you, I'm from here, I'm from there, I'm from there. Is there any road that is started in Nigeria that is good, that only one ethnic group passes? No. Is there any part of Nigeria that is working, that any ethnic group? No. It's education and everything. They're not in charge for several years. That's why we have hires out of schoolchildren. You can enrich one or two people, which will not work because it's a, it's, you're trying to just build a system where people make money without entrepreneurship. So there's no production, it will collapse over time. For me, they know, we need to dismantle it. I have support all over. And they know that once that starts. So for us, once you remove, that's why I keep saying, we must dismantle this criminality. If you know any tribe, people, they can tell you, oh, we're this, this is happening with that, this is happening. But at the end of the day, that's it. I just telling someone today, I say, listen, Abuja is in the north. You can't drive from Abuja to Kene. Can't drive from Kene to Auchi. Can't drive from Auchi to Benin. That is not in my area. But there's no road. Somebody said here, it was someone, someone told me today, it's for me, woman. And I said, hey, wait a minute, there's no, so you can go on and on and on. Nobody can go from Enugu to Makori, or Makori to Abuja. Can't go from Kanu to Medugri. So everywhere, you know, I try, I drove from Karuna to Abuja, for, I tried from Kanu to Karuna, Karuna to Abuja, just a week ago, to just cross Karuna Ring Road. It took us about two hours. It doesn't make sense. And this is a tribe that has been in power. So forget about tribe, forget about religion. It is purely a tool employed by the establishment, the criminal gang that has had Nigeria in one place. It doesn't work. That I can tell you. And they know that would have dismantled it. I can tell you, it would be dismantled. Once you bring competence in, they go away. All these things will go. Because it's not helping anybody. Somebody told me today about state creation and whether we'll get this, why people look for more local I said, because we, we have established a system of sharing, not a system of creating. So once you're sharing, people bother about number. But when you start creating, everybody disappears and goes back to do his work. Where did we go wrong in the last election? We didn't go wrong anywhere. We did the right things. But like I always say to people, when you have, when you bring a change, you find for enemy, all those who live off the old order. They don't go away. They gang up. So, and we're not in it, don't think it's a spring days to remove establishment. It's a long distance journey. Everywhere has happened in the world. Go and check everywhere, whether you're looking at what happened in India with Mandela, in America, everything. No change has come overnight. It takes time. And I urge all of you, if you really want change, we've just begun. We just have continued where we are. If I tell people and I say every day what I go through, you ask me, why are you still in this? Why are you still doing this? Why do you say I have to bother? But I'm in it. And I don't intend to change. You see, every now and then, you see agencies of government, tools of government. Even when I'm not running election, calling me name every day. They're not organized town hall meeting just for me. No problem. It doesn't bother me. Let's keep doing what we're doing. We did well. And we should be proud of it and continue in that trajectory until we're able, you know. There, yes, there might be one of those things, we'll correct them, the best things will correct. And I assure you, we're correcting them without naming them to be able to. But it's not going to be easy. We're going to do things. And next server, same, and next server was same as the establishment. The server won't work. Because the establishment admitted that it won't work. So it is us to continue to say it will work. There was no glitch. Amazon came and said, there was no glitch. Amazon glitch is noticed globally, is recorded globally. And as at that period, we even brought Amazon person who says, these are the number of glitches we have since inception. And there was none that was reported that day. So we know it didn't report. It was the glitch of the establishment of criminality that is in the system. And we must one day make it work. So we know there was no glitch. You know. So you talked about the external influences. There's no external influence. I don't need to lobby anybody. I can tell you that I went to several meetings outside Nigeria. Do Americans come to Nigeria when they are running an election? No. Do Canadians come to Nigeria? I will not go to any country. I'm a Nigerian. And I'm running to run, to serve Nigeria. Why would I go and lobby anybody? I'm one person who says, if I'm in office, we'll stop foreign aid. Because we don't need it. God gave us everything. We don't need to waste anybody's time. I said it today when I was in, when I was in my city council. Nigeria have everything it needs to be a super country. God gave us everything. I don't need to go and lobby anybody. We'll need, just need to fold our sleeves and walk. It's as simple as ABC. We don't need anybody. I have governed the state. I didn't leave the state, things were bad. Before I became governor of Anambra, Anambra was known for bad references and everything. In fact, it was named home for all. And I came and said, there's no place called Home for All. And we changed it to what? Light of the nation. And we said, we'll be first in everything. No longer are we going to be using bad reference, no quarrel, no nothing. And we first work. Self from education, from health, from this, from that. Fixing our small roads and everything. Somebody asked me today about, I said, I didn't do, I didn't start any new road. Maybe one or two. But I fixed the ones that were existing. Completed the one my predecessors from Nkike to everybody started. That's what we should do. We don't need any environmental. We want external relationship. In fact, let me tell you about international relationship. The more developed, the more developed, the more you dig in and do the right things, the more you earn your respect internationally.
Ah, that's true.
China didn't start by coming to beg America. Neither was Vietnam, neither was India. Today, yeah, it's been celebrated. These are countries few years ago, that were stuck in under development. If you don't know, within fifty, what we talked about China, India today, between year 2000, which was just yesterday, and year 2015, China pulled 439 million people out of poverty. India, 260 million out of poverty. Today, those two countries, the biggest in population combined, Nigeria is almost, have more people in poverty than two of them. It cannot happen. All we need is to have people who are sincere. And dismantle people from stealing public money. We can't continue like that. We have oil. We have gold, we have everything. So where are we going to beg people who don't have those facilities? No. We don't need their aid. We need people to suck it out. When I became governor, by influence of somebody called Professor Bissimwosun, asked him, he asked me to go and see certain people, he's still alive. I said, I won't see them, I'm contesting to the governor of Anambra City. And I'm not from Anambra. And when I became governor, I used to quarrel with people. People were not happy with me. If you know that, the elites in Anambra, even till today, are not happy with me. And it's not that I know, I know, because I go to see a president then who tells me, Peter, nobody is happy with you. And I'll say, Mr. President, I didn't promise people happiness. I promised to fix school. I promised to fix school, I promised to fix health, I promised because the only thing that would have made them happy is to give them public money. Which I'm not ready to give anybody. And that's it. And I can assure you, I can assure you that if I had one presidency, people won't be happy. The elites will not be happy. That's why they ganged up. Because they know what will have happened and everything. People were not happy. So it wasn't about people's happiness. I get warned, and I say it every day. I get one pill, people tell me, not even the female, not even the women, not even my wife. I always say my wife, whenever I say people are not happy, I say, you're not happy, equally. Because I shut down office of first lady. I said, it shouldn't exist. Because nobody voted for you. You're just my wife and I love you. So it's that one with me. It is me who they voted for. Today, we lose mother. And with us, you know, because I found out we were going to spend more money for an office that has no value than education. How? How did we get here? To call, so there's no external influence. It is us. The influence begins with us as a human being. I told people in Harvard, that one of the reasons people want to know why I went to so many schools. I wanted to know what they asked them in Canada today, I said, what is your best university? I go to different places, I want to learn. I was in City of Brundus to learn, just to learn. And I was shocked that the person who was teaching me what I wanted was a Nigerian. So they don't have different plan. So why are we going to go today, we'll talk about the influence? It is us allowing this. And finally, we said, will you keep contesting? What I can tell you, I'm not desperate to be president of Nigeria. I'm desperate to see Nigeria work. Because it can work. So if I find those who can do it the same way, if I find those who can do it, what I can do, what I do, of course, I will encourage them. I've been part of a system that is working. I've seen systems work. The one I want to see is Nigerians who don't, have you wondered why Nigerians are so religious? Yet things are going wrong? It's because they don't believe in God. They actually talk. But they don't believe in it. Because if they do, history will be different. They will have conscience, they will have compassion, and they will do the right things. But I've seen people do the wrong thing consistently while preaching. So for me, it's not about me. It's about us. How do we get it to go right? It is not very difficult. Nations after nations have done that. Why can't we do the same thing? It's as simple as ABC. Tell me the problem, the thing is the greatest problem in Nigeria. And I tell you that it can be solved. Because we're not the first people who have solved it. We're not the first people who have victim of criminality. It was all over South, I call it America. From Colombia to Mexico to this, to Brazil and everything. It's just solved. We're not the first country to be imagine poverty. It's been solved in other countries. So if they have done it, we're not the first country who did not have power. It's been solved in countries, and everything. I was just going in Tanzania last week. If you follow my tweet, Tanzania last week had to shut down five of their facility because they have overcapacity in electricity production. Tanzania, they shut down five, five facilities. Because they have overcapacity. They have more than they need. So what is wrong with us? That in twenty, thirty years, we're stuck in one place because the establishment don't want us to go. And they root it in tribe. Is there any tribe that have electricity, my brother? Show me where they have 24 electricity, and we'll go there and live. So it's not a tribe thing. Or show me any religion where even a church that resists 24 hours in Nigeria, church. And we all go there and worship. It is nonsense. We must dismantle this criminality that is today.
Please, questions from the women now. Women.
Your Excellency, my name is Amina. From Gombe State, I married from Taraba. My question is, there was this saying that you started getting to the grassroots late. Are you planning to start getting to people, especially people from the north? The problem of the north is, when you start from the top, the minor tribes that are there, they will not be able to get the help. And even if it's given to the top, they will give it to their own religion. And other religion will not get it. So they continue donkey ways. People are still, there are a lot of places, no light, no even water. They still drink water from the stream. So I hope you look onto the, on that. Also, next time you're coming to Canada, we'd like to see you, the first lady. So that we have women to mentor. Thanks.
That's a question for the, for his Excellency to answer.
Okay, I'm standing on the existing protocols. My question is around, I mean, the incident from the last election, where we found out that some pool boots were not well covered by the Labor Party agents. So my question is, what strategies are you looking to put in place, like in the coming election, to make sure that this, there is a widespread of Labor Party agent, appears to going to be Labor Party? Then are we hoping also to see like a collaboration or a merger with other, other political parties? Because, I mean, it's going to be very difficult for you to unseat the president's government or the president's administration. So this is my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I don't have question for Mr. Peter Obi. I just want to say thank you very much for giving Nigeria youth a lot of hope and encouragement. Thank you so much, may God bless you.
Hello, your Excellency. Thank you for have your presence here today. I just have I just have a question in terms of what advice would you give Nigerian youths in the diaspora and at home? Like in terms of, they have lost hope based on everything. I know that we have the same sentiments as people, but what would you advise us in terms of what, how to support or community back home?
This is a very good question. How many of you here know MC Damfo? MC Damfo. If you know him, you know why I'm doing what I'm doing.
Good evening. Thank you, Your Excellency. I have two questions, two prime questions. The first one is a personal one. You've said a few things, one is about the criminal enterprise in Nigeria, about how difficult things are. I'm wondering, how do you keep going? Can you tell us what keeps you going in this work that you are doing for which you're not being paid by anybody? But you've been doing it now for, at least since 2021 or 2022. And you've persisted in doing it since after the election. So that's the personal question, what keeps you going? The second part is kind of policy related. And that has to do with the security situation in Nigeria. I just came back from Nigeria last week. And I couldn't travel between Oweran and Sokar for security reasons. So are you able to tell us, not the detail, but give us some idea of maybe how you think you would have handled the security situation in Nigeria that is keeping people from moving and conducting even ordinary commerce? Thank you.
First question is this issue of grassroots. You started with the grassroots late. Well, maybe yes and no. Because if it was voting, people voted for us. But the system refused it. And I'm also beginning to reach out to the grassroots, like you said. I'm sorry, you must have seen me in the north and everything. But I'm not visiting the grassroots because of vote. I'm visiting them, or the next election, I visit them because I want to learn. When you say we have 20 million out of school children, you are talking about 20 million productive people that can change the world. Countries like Gambia, just 10 million people. Netherlands is 17 points, 10 million people. I can go on and tell you countries that are not even up to 20 million, there's so many of them, that are not even up to 20 million. So it becomes imperative for us to look at what is happening. And I went to to study and learn about the Almajuri system. And I found people of incredible talent. I spent time in Almajuri school, watching young people learn Quran. Sat with them and watched them. And I saw doctors, lawyers, engineers, everything. Because the same talent, they're using to learn the Quran and analyze it. It's all they need. What they needed, what we call share system of education. So for me, since they can't go to school, if I have the opportunity, I'll take school to them. Where they're learning the Quran, I'm going to put English teacher, mathematics teacher, science teacher, everything there. And I can tell you, before they finish learning the Quran, they also have learned something. We're not the greatest Muslim country in the world. Indonesia is there. The difference that Indonesia have over 90% secondary school enrollment, we have 28%. The difference is that they belong to the high portion of human development index, we are low. So what is lacking is available to us, and that is the grassroots. And I'm reaching out to the grassroots. I want to change them, I want to help them to be better people because they can help us to change the world. Not because they want to vote for me. Like I said, for me, it's to get Nigeria to work. And they're not just going to be engineers and everything, we need productivity. Productivity today. I believe that today Nigeria can change from the north. We can make more oil work for us, but I can tell you, the north will generate more money, more resources for us than oil. So I'm reaching out to them as much as I can, you know. And of course, we'll discuss the first lady next time. All I can tell you that she's okay, she's okay, there's nothing. We're living together, we're living, we've lived 30 years together and I think we'll live together for the rest of our life. But issue of, for now, we want to save Nigeria. Thank you. Somebody said, Labour Party agents, we are not in all the boots. I agree with you because we don't, we started, you know how we started and everything. There's so many lessons we learned, somebody asks about lessons, we're going to correct in the future. I won't stay here to tell you those lessons. Whether we are going to collaborate with people, you know, if the need be, yes, of course. People, collaboration, I'm collaborating with you people. You're actually the biggest collaboration we need to be able to dismantle what I'm talking about. We're going to work with everybody who thinks the same way we think, who wants to do the same thing we're doing. Our collaboration will not be based on transaction. It will be based on transformation. People have to be thinking the same way we're thinking. Otherwise, you're going to have a problem. If you go and collaborate with people who don't think the same way, or those that can easily change. Because there's some people who can change and believe in what you're saying, you can collaborate with them. But if you collaborate with those who don't believe in what you're saying, you're going to have a problem along the line. I always say to people that, I want to drive this bus, I want those to be in same place with people who are going to the same destination with us. Because if you go and carry people who have passed their destination, you have a problem. And that's not what we want to do. We want to do the right things and everything. So a party, we will change certain things and we'll collaborate, it is important. You know, and you said, thanks for the youth, and more, somebody asked about the advice of the youth. Let me be honest with you. We're doing what we're doing for the youth because we want to save ourselves. You can't be with your children, Anaki, and think you'll be safe. The reason why we are in security today is because we didn't invest in our youth yesterday. It is those people that we left and abandoned that have become a problem to us. If we have invested in them, the right education, the right things, the north is far unsafe today than the south. Because they didn't invest in education. They didn't invest in training those people. So if you leave these people abandoned, you're actually not saving your life. So what we're doing is investing in them to save our lives and for our children to live in a better society. Yes, you're in Canada, you live in a better society. But I can tell you, in terms of Nigeria, you also, one of the biggest, because your children won't come back there again. They don't want to be associated. Who wants to go where there's insecurity? Someone just said, he could not go because they don't want him to go to Enugu, they want to go to. So if you don't go, you think your children will ever go there? You think they'll come for your burial? No, 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 no. I've heard people who say, listen, you know, just bury my dad, I wish him well. So what you're doing is that you're investing in your future. And a youth asks me, what do I think about the youth? Yes, you're right.